Good afternoon, I'm Aaron Griffin Chair and I would like to welcome you to the June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four African American Heritage Heritage Commission Virtual Meeting. We will now call our meeting to order. The City County African American Heritage Commission consists of nine members. Three of those members are appointed by Asheville City Council, three appointed by Buncombe County Board of Commissioners, and three appointed by the six appointed members. The commission is to advise the City Council and county commissioners about the preservation, interpretation, and promotion of the African American arts, history, and culture. All committee members and staff are participating virtually. We are streaming live on our virtual engagement hub, which is accessible through the virtual engagement hub link on the front page of the city website, and also linked on the committee page. We also have an option for the the public to listen live by phone by dialing eight five five nine two five two eight zero one and entering meeting code nine four zero nine. For those of you who plan to speak during our live public comment today, you would need to hit star three to be put in the speaker queue. I will now go go through and introduce all committee members and staff who are participating virtually. For our committee members, please make sure to mute your microphone if you're not speaking. When you have a question or would like to speak, click raise hand and when recognized by the chair unmute your microphone. Please remember to mute your phone after you are done speaking. Committee members, as I call your name, please say a quick hello. Michael Hayes?
Hello.
Shalinda Pruitt?
Hello, everyone.
Dewayne McAfee?
Present.
And our newest Commissioner, Alfred Green?
Good afternoon.
Tiffany Debolo? Are you muted Tiffany? Okay. I think you're muted too as well, Miss Mitchell.
Present.
Thank you.
All right.
Staff and guests attending, we have Salam Manaya Merritt, Director of Equity Equity and Inclusion, City of Asheville.
Good afternoon, all.
We have Leonard Jones, Community Engagement Specialist, Buncombe County.
I don't believe that he has.
City Council Liaison, is she here? I can't see on this phone.
No, I don't believe that she is here.
Okay, very good. So, welcome everyone. To help our audience follow along, I will state each section aloud, each section of the agenda aloud. Again, I ask committee members to click raise hand and be recognized by speaking. Please state your name each time you comment. Just a reminder that the public is listening on the phone and this keeps them up to date on the order of the meeting and who is committing, commenting, I'm sorry, or speaking. First up on our list, we have approval of the minutes of April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. If you haven't, please take a few minutes to review or to look over the last meeting. Other than that, we just need a motion and a second. For the approval minutes of April eighteenth.
Most we approve the approval of the minutes April eighteenth.
And who who is speaking? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Vice Chair Hayes.
Vice Chair Hayes. Chair Griffin approved. Oh, yes, Miss Mitchell. You're muted, I think.
I second the motion.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so we're gonna do a roll call here. Catherine Mitchell?
Yes.
Michael Hayes?
Yay.
Shalinda Pruitt?
Yes.
Tiffany Debolo?
Yes.
Dewayne McAfee?
Yes.
Alfred Green?
Yes.
All right, so I'd like everyone to say a quick hello and welcome Mr. Green to the commission. He's our newest member. Mr. Green, can you tell us, if most of us know us, could you just speak a little bit about yourself and what you got, what's going on? What you have going on in the community and community? And why the African American Commission? There's a lot of it. Welcome, sir.
So my name is Alfred Green, but I go by Knowledge. I'm a community healthcare worker in violence prevention, I'm a North Carolina peer support specialist, I'm a behavioral tech specialist, and what I'm doing in the community is continuing the path of those that was before me that's trying to build the bridges and subtract a lot of the violence and negativity and separatism that's in our city and county. The reason for the African American heritage is because I'm an African American here in Asheville, North Carolina, and I know a lot of things that we once had is no longer there. And to be able to be a part of a group that's trying to bring some awareness as well as justifications to some of the things that we had, I felt that that would be an amazing thing to be a part of.
Very good. Welcome, sir. Thank you. Thank you for your contributions to our community as well.
Thank you.
All right, you feel welcome, brother Knowledge.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
This is Tiffany, welcome, and we're glad you're a part of what we're doing and looking forward to working with you in this different capacity.
Thank you as well, Miss Tiffany.
This is Shalinda, welcome to the team. Glad to have you on board.
Thank you.
Glad to have you. Mr. Green?
Thank you as well.
Dewayne McAfee, you spoke very well. Glad to have you aboard.
Very good. All right, so is it everyone? Next on the list, we're gonna do staff updates with City County, I mean, City Staff Liaison, Salam Manaya Merritt. See how I got that?
You got it. You better practice that. I'm so proud of you. I am Salam Manaya Merritt, Director of Equity Equity and Inclusion with the City of Asheville. The updates that I have for you today is around the Reparations Commission. We have our next meeting on Monday, June the seventeenth. I will tell you that we have been cooking with grease, really doing some really great work, voting on recommendations. We had a retreat on June the first, which went really, really well. I'm looking forward to Monday's meeting. And we have also developed a report writing team to start writing the final report that's gonna come out of this commission and their wonderful work. And so just wanted to let you all know that, and that's all that I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Merritt. Okay, so.
Vice Chair Hayes here. Salam, would that meeting be open to the public meeting on the seventeenth?
Oh, yeah, that's that's their regular meeting. So it is at the Civic Center from six to eight P M.
All right, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Anything? Any more questions? Okay, so we'll move on to unfinished business. As far as the Advanced Monument. They, we have already.
I'm sorry, I think I took that off, Advanced Monument. I think I removed that because at our last meeting, you said you really didn't have any updates. I can, I can place it back on there if you want it to be something that's a running.
No, no, that's, 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 that's fine, thank you, but the removal process has started, you guys, so, and it's too much. So, so next we have the marketing and branding. We started this discussion about that in the last meeting as far as marketing and branding and drafting our goals. And also, we talked about the calendar too, and also the budget. So.
I can provide an update.
Okay, that'll be fine.
I can provide an update on the marketing and the branding and the budget piece. So for the marketing and branding, there were questions about what, what type of marketing and branding. I shared that you all would be able to purchase shirts and it could have a logo for the city and the county and then have African American Heritage Commission on it, and I was incorrect when I shared that information. And so, because again, it is a city and a county commission, that is not something that we are doing at this time, and I won't say that it won't be done because it was a question I believe that was brought up that says the Reparations Commission, which is a little different because it's not, it's not an ongoing commission at this time. And so, and their budget is a little different when it comes to what they can spend on. So we did buy shirts for that, for canvassing, canvassing and community engagement events. But at this time, we're not able to purchase shirts and to have or have any logos on those shirts, whether it be the city, the county, or even the name of the African American Heritage Commission. And the reasoning for that, excuse me, is if someone leaves the commission, the shirt goes with them, right? And so, there are things that we need to do, and if it's okay for me to skip down to the budget because this has to do with a budget. Chair Griffin, I'll share that with a budget, what you all can do is you can pay for a retreat, you can have someone come and speak to you on different topics. You can pay to, when you have that retreat, if someone's coming and they, we wanna have food, or if we need to pay for their travel, if they're coming from out of state, we can do things like that with that budget that you have. And so, I'll pause right here for any questions that you all may have with regards to marketing and branding as well as the budget.
Anyone? Well, so I just want to be clear, so that that means even if the city doesn't, wouldn't provide that, that's something that we're, we're not allowed to do at all, right?
Right. At this, and I know that, you know, I think there's a lot of things that are being looked at when it comes to boards and commissions and having consistency across our boards and commissions, and so that might change, but at this point, yeah, that's where it stands.
It's just kinda interesting because I worked for Parks and Rec years and years and years and years and years and years ago when I was in high school or something like that, and I still have that shirt and I wear it, you know?
Right, but so is that, but was that a commission?
No, it wasn't a commission, but.
I think, I think it's a little different for commissions versus you receiving a shirt from a department within the city.
Okay.
Yeah, and so, and again, I can ask that question, right, and I can bring that up, but I think that there are some things being looked at when it comes to boards and commissions and making sure that we're consistent across our commissions.
Okay. Any questions? Anyone?
Mr. McAfee has his hand up.
I can't, let me see if I can get back here. I cannot see what's going on on the screen.
So that's okay, I'll, I'll just speak. Is there any opportunity for us to identify ourselves based on what you just said? How would we, if we're out in the community, how would we be able to identify ourselves? We can't do it through the system, we can't buy the T-shirts on our own accord. What's left?
Right, so that's a great question, Mr. McAfee. I don't have the answer, but I am writing that question down so I can get back to you all with an answer. And let's be clear, so if you're doing community events, because I'm assuming that you're asking about if you're out in community, you're doing community events and you want to share that you're a part of the African American Heritage Commission, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, maybe it is, and I don't know, but I'm gonna put this up. Maybe it's a badge that has African American Heritage Commission on it with the city's logo and the county's logo, I don't know. Right, but I am going to ask the question and I'll come back to you with an answer. And our, what I'll do is, once I get an answer, I'll email you all and then we can discuss it at the next meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else? I can't. Anyone else have their hand? No?
No.
So with that in mind, we'll move on to new business, which is really gonna take us back to unfinished business, is having a discussion behind another, a retreat. So we can iron some of this stuff out, so we can figure out what's going on, even with a, you know, the marketing branding and the goals and we spoke of a calendar, we know what we're able to do with the budget. A quick question with the budget is, I know someone was saying something about a what do you call the thing, the table with the African American Heritage, is that something that? Yeah, the table.
Yeah, let me confirm that. I don't think I brought that up when I was having the conversation, so let me confirm that, and that might be okay. Yeah, but let me just make sure, I don't wanna say yes and then give you all incorrect information yet again, so I apologize. I misspoke at the last meeting, but let me confirm the tablecloth.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
What's this? So some of the things that we, we did talk about in the last was strategic goals and being more visible, and getting on the docket at the reparations commissions, we talked about the cue cards, the picks, having a, you know, another picture of the, of the group. And we talked about the discussion, the draft of the recommendation for the revised scope of the commission. We talked about collecting black businesses. We talked about First Friday. And we also, one of the things that I really like is forming this Miss Debolo, you were talking about, we were talking about Miss Mitchell, what's going on with the black culture to be able to do something around that? So it's a lot of things that we, we spoke of and, you know, that we, we can put in action, you know, so. I like to see, hear what everybody's opinion and what they think about, you know, as far as having a, another summit so we can go ahead and get started and get back, everybody can be on the same page. Any comments?
I think that's a great idea, and when you say summit, you, you, you mean the retreat?
Retreat, that's what I, that's, yeah, that's what I meant, retreat, yes.
Okay, I, I really do like that idea. I mean, I know we just, yeah, I don't wanna put too much on there. That's great, because like, take it one bite at a time.
Yeah. Commissioner Hayes?
Hey, Vice Chair Hayes here. I think that is a great idea. I agree with Tiffany. Like, let's go ahead and get started. Let's get started planning it. The sooner the better. I know, you know, we're looking to add two more to have a full commission, right? Come on, right? We're still looking at add two more, so while we're waiting on that, let's go and plan the retreat, you know, it could be for a month out or whatever, but yeah, I think it's best we go and start on that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Hayes. Commissioner Mitchell, please?
I, I agree. I think we should go ahead and, and set a date.
Anyone else?
Salam Manaya Merritt, City Liaison. Are we looking at a Saturday? I heard Vice Chair Hayes said about a month out. I'm gonna ask for some grace and mercy, you all, because I have another retreat. I just did one with reparations, and I have one with Human Relations Commission on the twenty-ninth. And if I could just get a little breathing room in between those, next month is still fine, but maybe later in the month. Not sure if that will work for everyone. That's my ask.
Anybody gonna throw a date out? Need to look at my schedule. Next month?
I wanna add that every, the last Saturday of every month is a Black Love event, so if it's not on that last Saturday, I'd appreciate it. Maybe the first month, Saturday in August?
That's too far out.
The third Saturday in August? I mean, July?
Third.
Yeah, that's the nineteenth.
The twentieth.
Oh, I'm sorry, the twentieth.
I'm, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to check my calendar for that date. I think I'm okay, but I need to double check. I could check before the end of this meeting, but that sounds good.
Excuse me, this is Knowledge. Can't do the twentieth because the twentieth, we're hosting a event to celebrate those who were incarcerated and came home and are now on a positive path. We have the hotel already booked and the time and date already locked in.
Thank you, sir.
I don't know, that was for me or everybody.
That's what, is that for me?
No, that's for the retreat of the commission. What, what timeframe are we talking, a half a day in the morning?
Yeah, that seemed to work the last time, a half a day in the morning on Saturday, but. Miss Mitchell, I'm sorry.
I was going to agree to the twentieth. Alfred, would half a day morning on the twentieth work for you in any way?
So I, I'm, being that I'm hosting this event, I would have to be at the hotel to help with setup. The people that are coming in, I would need to direct them to the ballroom. I gotta check and make sure the food is properly set up and then guide people to where they need to be. The event is a brunch, so it'll be between the times of eleven and two.
Hmm. I get it. I also. I'm sorry.
Yes, Commissioner Pruitt?
I was just gonna recommend that whatever date we choose, that we go ahead and take care of the planning with the photography as well, since we'll all be together.
Very good.
So I like to keep that in mind.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner McAfee?
So since the twentieth is not available, could we push it to the thirteenth so that we could also lock in this date?
That would be, is that enough break for you, Miss Merritt? That's, you wanna take that into consideration?
But if you all, if that's the only date that you can do, that's fine. I'll, I'll, I'll roll with it. I'll roll with it.
Do I need to come pick you up?
Commissioner McAfee, I will talk to you after the meeting. No, you do not need to come pick me up. But if you all need to do, I'm looking at my calendar, I will, I will, I will make it work. I will definitely make it work, so. Because our next meeting is not until August, right? Yeah, okay, so yeah, let's, we'll make it work. Let's just, if you all are good with that, what I was going to ask you is as we talk about the calendar, and remember, I just wanna remind you all that we talk about the community calendar and there's, you know, other events taking place, just to make sure that that, I'm hearing people share that there are different things taking place, but just wanna make sure there's no other conflicts.
Right.
The date that you may choose, so if the thirteenth is it.
So.
Of July, I won't be in town. I was gonna say, go back to the last Saturday since we're talking about the morning, because Black Love started at two o'clock. But I'm, I'm at my family reunion, the eleventh to the fourteenth of July. So you're saying that the July the twenty-seventh? Yes. Which is the last Saturday, but since we're saying it's not a whole day and it's a half a day in the morning, I can definitely be there and then still make the event. So what time, so are you all looking like at ten to two or nine to one? So just to be clear on when you say the morning.
Well, I'll speak, nine to one works for me, but I'm flexible.
Same here.
Nine to one is perfect.
So should we go ahead and just go with the twentieth, since the majority is gonna be there?
No, it's the twenty-seventh.
I mean, the first, okay. Now, I need to check my date for the twenty-seventh. Let's see if I got a calendar.
And then the other question is location. Where would you all like to have this? Excuse me.
Where have you guys had them in the past? So I'm, I'm new, and so I haven't gone on any retreats with the Heritage Committee, so I'm gonna leave that up to, to the people who know better.
But the last time we had it, we had it at East Asheville Library. That's one of the ones that I can remember. It was at the library, but what about Miss Mitchell? Oh, Miss Mitchell?
I see Vice Chair Hayes.
Oh. Vice Chair Hayes?
No, Miss Mitchell, go ahead, please, go ahead.
Well, I, I was simply going to say that as a last resort, we could meet at the Berry Temple.
Berry Temple.
And I was gonna suggest that we have no place, Yummoja.
Tiffany again, the Grant Center. So I'd like to add to the community centers that I think for, did we say the Temple Avery, Monford, is that Monford?
No, Berry Temple.
Berry Temple, okay. With the community centers, we need to check the time because I think they don't open until ten. So just wanna verify that if we're doing a nine to one, we just need to check the time if it's a community center. Commissioner Hayes, does, is Yummoja available on the twenty-seventh?
Yes, it is. We have three suites, so it could be eight or seven. So, yeah, we have room, we have space.
I, I also have another question. I was thinking of the YMI, right, like it's downtown, it's on the block. And I'm not sure if that's a, if that's available or not. But they've done a lot of great work in there and. It's available. Oh, I forgot, you're on that board, right? Ready, we need to. Besides, City of Asheville is a great contributor. Thank you.
City of Asheville is a great contributor. Thank you for your contribution.
Oh, thank you, you're welcome. Okay, so nine to one. And do we want to decide today the location?
That would be great.
Well, I think pretty much we have decided. I would recommend us the YMI. If we can, but we also know that we have a perfectly good and reliable backup plan in Yomolja. And I just think from the heritage, from the committee standpoint, it could be beneficial for us to be in that space and show our support.
I will not be here on the twenty seventh. I will be in Maryland. So. Yeah.
So are you all able to do the first weekend in August? I know you said that that's too far out. Seems like July is a wash.
Well, as we communicate and talk, I think July is a wash, so the next option becomes August. I, I just think the sooner we get the better, the sooner we get together for this retreat. I think the smarter it would be.
Yes, I agree.
This is Tiffany DeBalo again. So this is why, going back to talking about that, that engagement committee is so important. So that there's still work that's being done in between. And it's just that we, we have a committee that does not have a quorum. So that it doesn't feel like we're just like waiting in the weeds and now time goes by and we haven't gotten anything or any planning done. But it does sound like what you both said, that July is just not gonna work. August seems like the only option, and that weekend works for me.
So do we need to acknowledge that August the third is the next viable date that we're looking at? I'm sorry, this is Dewayne McAfee.
Just have a, I have a couple of hands raised. This, I don't know who was first, but I'm gonna start the way it's on my camera. Commissioner Pruitt?
Um, I just had some questions regarding the YMI. I do think we do need to go tour, it's remarkable what they've done. But I do have some questions regarding parking, because I know that could be a little bit different. And that parking garage there is like the most expensive. So do we have any idea, did they cut that off on a Saturday? Like, I was just there when we hosted the Black Culture Heritage Trail fam with the media. And people were getting like twenty-five dollar tickets, fifty dollar fines, like just for parking for so many, you know, hours. And so, um, do we have any idea on that? And if not, can we take that under consideration? Because that's kind of high.
Yeah, um, I, so I think they're gonna charge for parking if it's on a Saturday. The only free parking that I know is Miss City Lot, that's behind City Hall, which means that you would have to walk. That's the only parking that I know is considered to be a free on the weekends.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mitchell?
I'd pass.
Okay. Commissioner Green?
August the third is my birthday. So I will not be in North Carolina on August the third.
Okay.
What I would like to add, this is Salamanaya City Liaison, is happy birthday, Knowledge, we say it to you early. Is that we may not find a date where everyone is going to be able to do it. But I do think that you all need to land on a date. You can always bring someone up to, you know, update them on what took place. But I think you all need to land on a date, because then we're going to September.
Right.
Right, and then we'll be into October, November. So I, I think there needs to be some date that you all can agree on.
So, thank you. It's, it seems as though it's either the twentieth, the twentieth or the twenty seventh. Let's, let's, let's go with one of those.
Well, you're not gonna be here the twenty seventh, correct?
Right, I won't be there the twenty seventh.
Right, but you as a chair, I think should be.
All right, so can we agree? Thank you. So everybody was, everybody else was good with the twentieth, right? No? Just Mr. Green?
This is Knowledge Green. Michael Hayes was also invited to this event, because he was a person who was incarcerated, that has been released and is doing remarkable work. Mr. Dewayne is also invited to this event, because he's also a part of Black Man Monday, and they're partnering with hosting this event. And my question was, even if these dates, even if a person is not able to be at the retreat on these dates, can we not make a Zoom for whoever's not available? So that they'll be able to participate, even though they're not physically there?
I'm thinking. And what, so I guess my question is, if you're at an event, would you be participating via Zoom?
Not, not per se the twentieth. Again, this is Knowledge, sorry. Not per se Santa twentieth, because when we moved past the twentieth and the twenty seventh, we had, uh, July other dates. And then, so if we're not at an event and we're having a retreat, is there a way that those people who may not be at the retreat within itself, be able to log into a Zoom or be able to log into a call, be able to participate?
So if you all have a quorum, your retreat has to be open to the public. If it's not, um, if it's not live streamed, excuse me, trying to figure my, find my words. And so we would need to look at the capabilities of being able to have something streamed, no matter where you have it. If there's going to be a quorum at your, at your meeting, at your retreat. So I'll have to, I'll have to figure that out, because if it's not a city, if it's not a city or county facility that we can utilize, then we're gonna have, we're gonna have some, I think some challenges with having something zoomed. So I will get back to you all with that. That might just change the dynamic of where you can have it, if that's something that you all want to do, if you want to have it livestreamed. Can you tell me what you've done, what you did with your last retreat? How many people attended and how, and how did you do that?
I, I'm not sure that we had a quorum either.
Okay.
But it wasn't livestreamed at all.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so let me follow up on that. And then get back to you all quickly. What I would like to do is, can we just take a vote on who's available on what dates? Right, just like a, starting with, I think you all start, the first day was the thirteenth. Like, how many people are available on July the thirteenth, July the thirteenth? How many are available on the twentieth? And so forth and so on, just so we can get a, I think that would be helpful. And determining what dates will. And it also depends on how, you know, what you are gonna be working on as well, right? Like, you, you, you have your goal, your strategic goals. And I know you want to have as many voices in the room as possible when you start discussing those things, right? So I would, if we could just kind of show of hands, who's available on the thirteenth? Okay, so that's five. Who's available on the twentieth? You can either leave your hand up or take it down. The twentieth?
I feel mine, this is Vice Mayor Hayes. Knowledge, what time will I be going on, on the twentieth? What time will I be like getting involved? Because we have a, if we have the retreat from nine to one.
This, this is Knowledge. I can't per se that, because it's just a bunch of, we just gonna, it's people coming in that's gonna call your name up, hand you out a certification, you know what I'm saying, and take a little picture, and then we gonna eat. We just celebrating those of us who were incarcerated. So, you know, we, we putting it together as we moving through it, because there's nothing that's never been done.
Okay, I got you. All right.
So I'm looking at five people on the twentieth. Who can do the twenty seventh? Riffy, you need, you need to take your hand down. Okay, and then who can do August the third? So it looks like you all are at five for every date. And July the twenty seventh is the only one where the chair would not be there.
Vice Chair Hayes, please, here. So I speak to, I, I speak to Chairman Griffin quite often. And I'm, you know, if I need to, I will definitely be able to, you know, fill in in any capacity that the chairman will fill in. And I will, you know, keep him abreast of everything that's going on. If we, if we choose to meet on the twenty seventh.
Okay, so I guess you all just need to determine what date you're gonna be able to, to meet on. Because again, across the board, for all of the dates, the thirteenth, the twentieth, the twenty seventh, and the third, five of you are available.
Vice Mayor Hayes here. I would like to, I don't know, man, I don't, you know, I don't know if this calls for a motion, but I, I'd say the sooner the better.
Yeah.
So I'd say the thirteenth. If we could have a vote on the thirteenth, or we can have a motion for the thirteenth, I think we can move in that direction if we want to go later. But I think the sooner the better, because there's so many things going on and we want to be, you know, we want to, we want to operate in distance in order and be ready to really, really roll, man.
So there's a motion on the floor for the thirteenth?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner, Commissioner Mitchell?
I second the motion.
Alfred Green?
So you can do a roll call vote?
Roll call vote? Alfred Green?
I agree.
Commissioner McAfee?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBalo?
No, because I'll be out of town.
Commissioner Pruitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayes?
Yay.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
And Chair Erin Griffin, yes.
Okay, so the motion passes. So July the thirteenth is the date. And we agree on the time of nine to one? Is that correct, you all want nine to one?
Yes.
Okay, and then the location?
A Yomolja.
A Yomolja. We don't have to worry about it, yeah.
Right, that's right.
Parking and.
That's right.
Okay, so did you all want to speak about what's gonna be on the agenda?
Vice Mayor Hayes here. I mean, Vice Mayor Hayes.
That's why I'm laughing, that is why I'm laughing, Vice Mayor.
So, so the last time that we met, we, the last time we had our retreat, we were really focused on our purpose, our mission statement, our values, all of that. Should we bring that back to the table, so that we can have them, you know, solid about what we're doing?
Right. We should, and, and Commissioner DeBalo talked about strategic goals as well, I think that's important. Yeah. And we also had mentioned about doing something in order, and, and, uh, for the, the Black Culture Trail. So I think that should be on there as well. The planning for that.
I see Mr. McAfee's hand up.
Mr. McAfee?
I, I just wanted to say, with new members in place, I would be interested to see whatever, what information you guys came up in the past. Let's try to build on it. And then let's try to be more impactful in our community, which I think that's the whole idea of this organization to begin with. I would like for this committee to be impactful in the community, however that looks.
Yeah, I think that's important, because it seems, I don't want to say roadblocks, but we, it's, we have to be, we have to figure out a real creative way to do this. Because we can't do social media, we can't do, there's a lot of things that we can't do. So we, we really need to try to focus on what we can do and how, how we can be impactful. Yeah. Any more question? Oh, I think, okay, Ms. Merritt?
Actually, you can, Mr. Green can go, and then I'll, I'll chime in.
Okay. Commissioner Green?
Is there a way that I can have a list of the things that we can't do? Because from listening so far, it seems like we can't have shirt. We can't do certain things on social media. And in order to be impactful in community and have strategic goals that are based on things that help community, these are the things that we're gonna need to move forward in that. So is there a way that I can get a list of what we can or what we should not be doing?
And I'm glad I let you go first, Salamanaya Merritt City Liaison. So what I'm going to do is, I am going to gather information about what is allowed and what is not allowed, so that I can share that with you all. And have the questions that have been asked, so that I can bring that to you before the retreat, right? And then that'll be a way for you all to discuss, I think, to start strategically planning what you need to do, because you'll have your parameters of what is allowed and what is not allowed. So I'll work on that, Commissioner Green. And then I'll get, I'll send an email out to you all with the information.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Pruitt?
This is Shalinda. Can you also, if possible, send some type of calendar invite or something for this summit date? So I can get it plugged in where I need it.
And I'm adding the items that you all.
And I'm adding the items that you all, um I'm just adding the meat to it, which is the items that you all wanted to talk about. So it'll just be a, a little draft agenda in here and of course that could change. And the photography. Oh yeah, thank you for that, okay.
Yes. Um could we also add the conversation about, I, I don't know, Ms. Mitchell, around the Black Heritage Museum, what?
We're still in negotiations with uh the city uh about the location and so it's a little premature to talk about the museum. However, I can say we are uh working with three black artists to put uh public art at some of the marker sites. And that will um give them an opportunity to showcase their work. And of course, it would be uh maintained in perpetuity along with the markers.
Nice. Thank you. Uh Commissioner Hayes, Vice, Vice Jay Hayes?
Vice Jay Hayes here. Um so there are, you know, we, we had a conversation at our last uh meeting concerning how we can support um other organizations, other uh other events that are happening around town, particularly those that involve uh, uh our realm of, you know, how we serve on this commission. Uh if I'm not mistaken, Goon Bay is happening this year. Um uh uh Knowledge is doing the uh, the Peace, he's, uh the Peace and Unity Week, Forty-Eight Hours of Peace and Unity. Uh Black Love has something go, you know, how can we, I, I really want us to talk about how we can be a part of collectively uh uh, I don't know, showcasing or, or having information on all these events. Not only for us to show up, but to get stuff out to the community because there is yet to be a community calendar form of uh that can keep everybody informed of what's going on. Does that make sense?
Makes a lot of sense. And um I'm supposed to be working on that with uh Commissioner DeBalo. Uh but it'd be great if we all can just pitch in with that. Try, trying to see like, we supposed to be getting a draft to, um getting a draft of that calendar to give to um Mister Na- uh Salamanaya Merritt. Yeah, that's, that's one of the things that needs to be done.
So I just invite as well.
Commissioner Green, your hand?
Hey, uh this is Knowledge again. Um I can double check because we supposed to be getting the uh calendar of all events that's going on, excuse me, in the city and county. We was talking about that in a meeting that we had on Tuesday. But um I know it's an event going on tonight at six o'clock that will have some impactful people inside the facility that can also give the link out now for this calendar. And uh I can try and get that and then um I guess I would have to get your number cuz I think your number is the only number I don't have, Mister Griffin. And send it to you so that you can send it out to everybody, or I can get it to Mister La or Mister Hayes.
If you could send it to all of us, that would be great.
Yeah, I only know like three of y'all's numbers.
Okay.
I'll make sure you have it. Any more questions, comments? Everybody good?
Would you like, I'm sorry, would you like for me to go over what um I sent to you all and what I have down for the agenda? For the meeting, I sent the invite out to you already.
Perfect.
Okay, so I have a, um we have a retreat that's gonna be at Emoja from nine to one on July the thirteenth and I have purpose statement. Um I think I put mission statement twice, so I'll take that off. Um purpose, mission and statement, strategic goals, you're gonna ask me during strategic planning. We talked about the calendar. Um I got the note in there about the photography. The parameters of social media marketing and branding for this body and um supporting other organizations and events.
We need a guest speaker, right?
You can't, you don't have to.
We don't have to?
No, you don't have to. So this retreat is, is, is an opportunity, like you can have another one, right? I think, um what would be great is for you all to get together and to, and decide what is that you need to do, what are your goals for the upcoming year, right? And it can go into the next year. Um and then maybe there is six months, there's another retreat to come back and talk about like what has been accomplished, what else needs to be done, right? Maybe there's an opportunity to pivot somewhere. Um and then you can bring some, or if you need someone to come in to talk about a specific topic or um yeah, you can, you can add that later. I think it would be who of you all to just kinda get to know one another cuz there are new people on the commission, speak about what your goals are, the purpose, where you're headed. Um and get that all line, outlined out and cuz that's gonna help inform your agendas as well. Um and if you're gonna have that community engagement team or um group that comes out of this, what does that work look like? So I think it's kinda laying the foundation and getting an understanding of where you all are headed.
Sounds good. Any more questions or comments?
No, sir.
All right, um Ms. Manaya Merritt, is it anyone in the speaker queue that's waiting to come in?
Let me check with um Logan. Any public comments, Logan? Thank you so much. We are good.
We are good. So the, thank you. So the future agenda items is the
Retreat items.
The retreat. All right, so uh next, if there's any, no more questions or anything, the next regular meeting is scheduled for Thursday? Well, no. It would be
In August.
So we, okay, so the next scheduled meeting is August, uh August eighth, two thousand and twen- twenty-four. And it will remain virtual. Uh check in at the City Engagement Hub for more directions on how to participate. So um I, I adjourn the meeting now if there's no objections.
Uh this is uh Commissioner DeBalo. I have a question. How can my input be included, if possible, on the retreat? I feel like I've been showing up and pretty consistent at these meetings and I feel like my voice is not gonna be heard. I won't be able to be in a picture to show that I'm even a part of this group. So I'm feeling a little left out and I wanna be able to at least weigh in on some things because I've been putting in some work.
Yes, you have. So what can we do? I, 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 I sense that you really wanna, so what, what day? We already voted.
Yeah, I don't mean to change none of that. I just, I'm asking for an option of how can my um thoughts and ideas be, be a part of it. Even if it's probably weighing afterwards and then weighing in, but if there's some type of option to, yeah.
Ma- may I comment on that response to that? Okay, Salamanaya Merritt, City um Liaison. Tiffany, what I think can take place is um there won't be any voting at the retreat. So I believe having a plan, um the plan can be developed. You'll, the agenda will be sent out earlier, right? So you'll know the agenda topics. I would say coming back into the next meeting in August would be you all having the opportunity to discuss um what took place at the retreat for those who were not there and who voices were not heard. So your August eighth meeting can be a retreat debrief, right? As well as an opportunity for people to provide whatever it is that they wanna provide. If there's anything that you can vote on, hopefully you'll have a quorum then and you can vote on any items that were discussed.
And, and also
Great, thank you.
Would, would she be able, since the, the um, the agenda is already out, she'll know what's on the agenda.
Right.
And she can, she can jot down some things or, you know, and let us know. We definitely gonna take that in consideration.
That works. I appreciate it. Okay, yeah, so again, at the August eighth meeting, then if there's any further questions or you feel like there needs to be some more input for those who had, who did not attend, you can have that conversation. And so your, your August eighth meeting can just be your retreat debrief, right? And that's just further discussion for those individuals who are not there. And if there's anything that you feel like you need to vote on, if you have the time to vote on and you have a quorum, then you can vote on those things.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions, comments? No? Um thank you everyone for just showing up and getting involved. It's great to see, it seem like I haven't seen you guys in so long. Um it's great to see everyone and I'm excited about this new direction that we're going in. And with all these great minds, it just makes me sharp. You, you guys are awesome. Nothing else to say, um this meeting is adjourned.